All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this public hearing. Presentation of the annual budget for the 2324 school year. This is for the Appleton area school district. Board of Education. My name is Kay Edgard, board president and first roll call of fellow board members. James Bacon.
Here.
Edward Ruffalo.
Here.
Jason Kolpak.
Here.
Nick Ross.
Here.
And then Chris Soder.
Here.
And Pang Tao.
Here.
All right. All board members are here. I think we'll just turn this right over to Holly Burr for the presentation. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the 2324 budget hearing for the public for Appleton area school district. I will start tonight. The next 30 to 45 minutes, we will cover the following topics, spend just a few minutes. With the year just ended 2223 and then also current enrollment. And then a high level overview of the 2324 proposed budget and tax levy. I will be going off the slides, but we'll also be referencing a few of the pages in the budget booklet that was attached to the agenda. And the budget booklet, although it's a, it is still a summary, does go into much more detail than we will do in this slide presentation. We will take a brief pause at the end of each section for questions. And board members, you will be asked to approve the budget and tax levy during the regular board meeting immediately following this meeting. So 2223 was the second year of the biennial state budget. This was the second year of no increases to the revenue limit or per pupil state aid. We saw a slight increase last year in both state aid as a total and in the tax levy as well. As an, we increased in the amount levied for private school vouchers. And another increase, which we'll talk a little bit more about in another slide is the, we had a positive effect of the rise of the interest rates over the second half of 2223. And so we saw more interest income than what was originally budgeted. The, put the use of the U.S.R. funds on this slide again, just because it's such a significant grant. And it, the, the funding remained relatively close to the previous, previous year at the 6.8 million. Overall total expenditures for the year in all funds. And I'll be talking tonight, sometimes we'll talk about general operating funds and sometimes we'll talk about all funds. All funds. Everything included was 246,637,000. This includes general fund operations, special education, any special projects, capital projects, and including this year, we started the referendum construction, debt repayments. And again, in 2223, we also had a restructuring, food service functions and community services, including two of our community schools. Just a quick, quick couple highlights of expenditures from 2223. As a related expense, spend it's expenditures, excuse me, total about 6.8 million. Compensation increases for the last year, about 3.7 million and health insurance costs totaling about 2 million. With all that in mind, we ended the year with a change in fund balance of about, right around $5 million. 6 million of this was due to starting self-funded health insurance in January of 2023. With a self-funded plan, it is allowed and recommended to keep a reserve for future costs in healthcare. This $6 million is reserved specifically for healthcare costs and cannot be used for anything else. With that, we had about a 1 million negative overall. That would have been more. I mentioned the 1 million or the increase in interest earnings. And that was about a million dollars with the, the, the jump in interest rates last year. And then on an U.S.R. note, the summer school expenses were no longer covered by U.S.R. In 2223, we transitioned those back to a regular budget.
Holly, can I just? If you can just emphasize, please, that the change to the fund balance is, is designated. I mean, it's very much designated. I think sometimes it's, can be easily confused that when, because the fund balance can go up and down, but it does not necessarily mean that we have 5 million more dollars in expendable funds. It's specifically reserved for a designated purpose. I just think sometimes that's easily misquoted out in the press and in the community and all, so I appreciate it.
Correct with that, Kay.
Appreciate you.
Yeah, that is exactly how this is, is that the $6 million there is reserved for self-funded health costs. It specifically, the calculation allows for several months reserved. So that, you know, two months ahead, we know how much money, we don't know how much money we're going to have to pay out. We also don't know of future expenses that may or may not occur. This money is reserved specifically for self-funded help. We cannot use it for anything else.
Let me ask them the slide. So I just want to make sure. So the 5 million is a positive change to the fund balance?
The 5 million is a positive change to the fund balance.
A little unclear because I think there's a dash. I'm not sure if it's a minus.
The 1 million is a minus. Sorry.
The second 1 million.
The second 1 million, the dash is an unfortunate typo. Sorry.
The only one on here that's a negative number is the negative 1.1%.
Correct. Yeah, my apologies. We'll, we'll have a slide on the fund balance a little bit later and it'll be a little bit more clear. But yes, you, you both have it. You both understand it correctly. Uh, moving on then, the, the tax levy, just for more for reference for our discussion a little bit later. The tax levy last year was about 74.5 million with a mill rate of $7.10. That included $5 million for future debt repayment. And we did talk a little bit about 2022, 23, we did issue debt for the new construction. We issued 90 million. And then had a refinancing. So at the end of the year, we were left with 75.2 million as our ending debt balance. Okay, other questions on 2223?
Holly, when we had originally done the budget, I seem to recall that we had budgeted a deficit for this year of close to 3 to 4 million dollars. And we actually came in quite a bit better than that, is what I'm hearing from you.
Yeah, yes. And I knew this would be a little bit difficult to explain. We had talked, we, we approved a budget last year somewhere between 3 and 4 million deficit. Early in the spring, I was predicting about 2 million deficit. And then basically what happened is the interest rates, when they jumped January through the end of June, there was an additional million dollars that we had not budgeted for, which kind of accounts for that extra 1 million. So we ended, operationally, we ended with a negative 1 million. On paper, our ending fund balance is 5 million higher because of the 6 million reserved for self-funding. And I know that's very confusing. But it, that is carved out, but operationally, we did end up with a negative 1 million.
And what is the source of that 6 million?
So when you self-fund, you basically, the premiums you normally pay to a insurance company, you know, you send in your check every month. Instead, instead of sending a check off to a company every month, I put it in a bank account. And then we pay the bills. So then we get the bills from the providers, from the clinics, hospitals, et cetera. We pay those bills and that comes back, then that comes out of that account. The balance is what's left.
And is that 6 million a minimum reserve number? We're going to make sure it never drops below 6 million? Is that the intention, being self-insured now?
There's a formula that's allowed by the state on how much you're allowed. The 6 million is what we're allowed based on our current level of participation. Because it doesn't exist. So, so yes, we, we will, that the intent is to fully fund that every year to make sure that we do have a reserve for bills that are coming as well as unforeseen ones. You know, next year, if, if rates would go, or claims, excuse me, not rates, if the claims would become higher than what the money that we're putting away, we could tap into that reserve a little bit then.
So we don't have to fund the 6 million every year. Once it's established, as long as we keep it at 6 million, there may or may not be additional dollars after we put it in any given year, if I understand that correctly.
Correct.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the second couple of slides for then on enrollments. We have just a couple of historical years out here for you. This year's third Friday in September count is down slightly from last year. As you can see, these numbers are actual students that we are educating in the district. And these are impacted by open enrollment, which we'll talk about in the next slide. Historical counts for both actual enrollment numbers, which that's what this is, and district membership numbers, which is used for calculating state aid, is on page seven of the budget booklet. So if you want to look at the different, kind of see the difference between those numbers. And this year's open enrollment numbers, so maintaining a positive net difference is, is our, always our goal here between open enrollment. As this impacts the district's financial situation, this funding is outside of the equalization aid formula. So maintaining more of positive number between open enrollment students in and open enrollment students out basically means more revenue in our budget. Just a side note, we did see this number spike during the pandemic, mainly due to the virtual schools. It does seem now that we're getting now back down to closer to our pre-pandemic numbers. We're still up from pre-pandemic, but any questions on enrollment?
Yes, um, the 963 out, that's not private school vouchers. That's students living in Appleton area school district going to another public school district, right?
Correct. Yes, we are not talking about vouchers. We are talking about, exactly like you said, other students going to other school districts.
I do want to add that of the six largest districts in the state, we're the only district that has a positive net difference between out and in. And out of the more urban districts in the state, we have the, the most difference in positive out and in. And our students that enroll out of the district are, as you would imagine, local, Kimberly, Hortonville, Manasha, then also virtual schools. So there is a growing number of virtual schools in the state that our students are at times choosing as well.
Okay, moving on then to the current year, 2324. We will see our overall total budget increase to 309 million. And this is largely due to the construction costs. We will have over 50, over 50 million anticipated in construction costs for the current school year. We're going to spend just a little bit of time here on the revenue limit. We talked about this a lot as the, we were talking about what the state was going to do over the summer. So revenue limit again is the total amount of combined state equalization aid and property taxes that we are allowed to receive. This year, the allowed limit increased to $11,000 per pupil. And Apple, Appleton, we were at 10 to 56. So we saw an increase of $744 per, per pupil. And this will increase by an additional $325 for the 2425 year. State equalization aid increased. We passed an operational referendum and private school vouchers all increased. And all of these factor into the total revenue limit calculation. Okay, state equalization aid. This is a pretty complicated formula that starts with the total amount allocated by the public, allocated to the public schools from the state. It is divided out based on district's prior year spending, total property values in the district and district student membership. With the increase from the out, in the allocation from the state this year, we will be receiving an additional 6.1 million in aid to a total of 104.5 million.
Pardon me, just real quick, Kayla, is there a way to remove that little box on the bottom? Yeah. If not, that's fine.
On the top.
Perfect, thank you. I don't want to be clicking on anything. Okay, property tax levy. This year's levy, proposed levy will increase by 36, 3.6 million. 50% of this increase, so over 1.8 million is attributed to the increase in private school vouchers. And again, private school vouchers, we are just the pass-through agency. We levy the taxpayer. And, but then the money goes directly from the state to the private schools. And then another part of the levy this year, just to note, the debt repayment is down slightly this year. I had about 12.7 million. We'd like to include just this quick little visual here on the property tax levy, just to kind of explain how we get to where we are. So we start with the revenue limit for general operations. This year, we are at 168.4 million. You then subtract the equalization aid that we get from the state to the 105.7, which gives us the 62.7 million that can be leveled, levied for general operations. This budget isn't assuming a decrease in the debt levy due to increased interest earnings and using some fund balance in the, in the debt fund. So we will add a 12.8 million for debt. And then basically a level amount for community service fund from last year of about 2.7. So those three added together, the 62, the 12, and the 2 gets to us to our 78.2 million.
The 12.8 was debt repayments?
Debt repayment.
And 2.7 was the
Community Service Fund. So another interesting piece to, with the state budget this year. This year, we not only saw an increase in the allocation aid from the state, but there was also an increase to the school levy tax credit. This is not always known or seen, so we kind of wanted to highlight it this year. This is not money that the district gets, but rather a tax break for the taxpayers to lessen the amount or lessen the impact of a tax levy. So this year, the state budget, budget included around $1 billion in school levy tax credits. And an estimated increase for residents in Appleton School District is about 3 million. So I'm showing a tax bill from a district resident from last year, 2022 tax bill. The amount circled in red is what the actual school tax credit amount was reduced by before they listed the, the total highlighted in yellow. So the total that's up here in yellow is already minus this amount, but they are required to show this on your tax bill. If you've never taken a look at it and noticed that before, that's what this number is doing, is it's reducing this actual tax levy. So the 3 million our residents are expected to see as additional credit here should be about 20 to 25% higher for 2023. So this particular resident tax should see at least $100 in additional credits.
So the state could have chosen to put those dollars into equalization aid, which reduces taxpayers' burden, but instead they put it into this tax credit, which essentially does the same thing. It's just a little more complicated for us to figure out. So we don't know exactly how this is going to impact each taxpayer. We just know the big dollar amount which Holly shared. If that were to have come to us in equalization aid, we could have more accurately predicted how it was going to impact taxpayers because it would have been that much less in levy amount for us. But this is the way it's done this year. So we do think that ultimately taxpayers will not see an increase in their taxes if you take their combination of vouchers, our tax levy, which includes the vouchers, and then this increase in tax credit. But it's very complicated to figure that out for individual residents.
When we calculate and distribute our mill rate, this tax credit included in that as well? Okay.
It is not.
It would have been if it was part of the equalization aid, right?
So really, we won't, we won't know then until we see our tax bills.
We won't, but you know, kind of a public service announcement, this is a good year to pay attention. Because we should, everybody in the state should be seeing a bigger number in this box.
And you anticipate it would be a 30%? I mean, but maybe we don't really want to go on record to say what that is. I mean, because
We're anticipating 20 to 25% higher.
20 to 25% higher. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Sorry. But yes, this number should, your tax credit levy should increase.
But this is not, like, the fact that this will happen is not part of the budgeting process. And so none of this is reflected in the budget that is proposed tonight because really we don't know what the result will be.
That is very accurate, Nick. It is not reflected in the budget. We just wanted an awareness because the levy is increasing. That we do control. But we wanted an awareness that it will, even though it's going up, it's not going to go up. We're hoping it's level or only a very, very slight increase due to this credit on the backside.
One last question. The way this is passed at the state level, is this a one-year increase in the tax levy or?
It would have
The duration of this?
I, I would have to review, not sure how they split that out over the biennium. Since it's a two-year state budget, I'm sure they split it out over the two years. Okay, our next step then is the budget adoption and the tax levy certification. This has to be completed by the board by November 1st. And we do have it on the agenda for the regular meeting tonight. So just a quick, again, the kind of just a where are we at? So property tax, rate history. And this is in the budget booklet as well. A 12, page 12, I believe, has the, the full list. API only tracks these back to 1984, but the rate, the mill rate 2023 will be the lowest rate since they've been tracking these. So our 6.5 here is the lowest rate since we've had it. But as you can see, the levy itself generally continues to climb, as do the property tax values continue to climb. 2023 budget. We'll start with the revenues again. And this is for our main operating fund. And the, the general fund and special ed makes up over 80% of the total budget. So revenues this year in, are increased nearly $8 million to a total of 2, 208 million. Local revenues are up 4.9, state aids are up 5.2, and federal grants will be down. The chart to the right shows the breakdown of the largest percent, 58% coming from state aid. The next is local revenues, mainly the tax levy, but some other local revenues in 28%. Inter-district funds, which is open enrollment at 8%, and then federal grants of 6%. Moving to the expense side then, at previous board meetings, we've discussed the salary, already discussed the salary increases, which total about 6.3 million. Uh, which total about six point three million. The, we are budgeting a ten percent increase in employee health insurance starting January first. So that in addition to the associated, um, benefit increases when you increase salary, so like. That WRS retirement and social security. Um, make up the two point nine million. Purchased services increase about two point four. This is a slightly larger than normal increase due to our high inflation rate. Transportation, custodial and other services, um, have seen some significant increases in the past year. Total general fund expenditures are budgeted at two hundred and eleven million. And the chart to the right shows the breakdown in expenditures by large group. Uh, moving on then, we talked a little bit earlier about our fund balance and what it's looking like. So we are ending the year with, uh, at sixty-four point five million. Um, just a little bit of a discussion, kind of a reminder of what, and I know we just kind of talked about this. Um, but a positive fund balance represents a financial resource available to find finance expenditures in future periods. Much of a fun, much of a fund balance is reserved or assigned to specific costs. Such as healthcare, which we already talked about. Having a reserve helps the district not to have short-term borrow for fluctuations in cash flow. It demonstrates financial stability, which helps bond ratings. This is again going to be important as we issue the additional forty million debt in future years. And lastly, it has funds available for unseen needs. We would like to keep this balance around twenty-five percent of expenditures. The current balance of sixty-one point two million is about twenty-nine percent. However, bearing in mind that six of that is specifically reserved for self-funded health. This year's revenues are less expenditures by about three point three million. Meaning we, uh, have a deficit balance again. We'll be using this amount out of our fund balance. To bu- to balance the budget for this year. And this is a strategic planned and fiscally responsible way to ma- both maintain a healthy fund balance. While not impacting current programs. So further discussion on the funds, fund balance, there we go. And lastly, just a quick summary of some of the other funds that make up our total budget. So funds twenty-one and twenty-nine are kind of earmarked as special project funds. Um, they in fund twenty-one is mostly made up of activity funds at the individual sites. As well as small grants and donations. And, um, as well as fund twenty-nine, those are both kind of small grants, donations and then activity funds. Fund thirty-nine is our referendum debt. So as you saw, so the actual payment amount this year is thirteen point seven, we are only levying for the twelve. That you saw on the earlier side. Um, and then capital projects, uh, it says fund forty-one, but it's actually fund forty-one and fund forty-nine now, um. So that's our regular capital projects that we do at the district as well now as the. Um, the referendum construction. So again, that number went up by about fifty million dollars in this budget. Food service. Uh, stays on trend at just over nine million. And then again, the community services that we talked about a little earlier at two point seven. And your final opportunity for questions.
I just also want to emphasize, or you know, this is a a public hearing, so if anyone is is present that has any questions. Um, you also would be welcome to, um, pose your questions. So. I don't see any, but any, anything from other board members or, uh, Chris or Pang? Don't see, can't see your hands.
I had just one question, Holly. So I was looking at the numbers last night. For my own purposes as a board member, and quite frankly, as a taxpayer. And and just wondering if I've got this right. So we have a twenty-five million dollar, almost twenty-six million dollar. Shortfall in special education funding, fund twenty-seven, that we have to take out of the general fund. We run about fourteen million dollars short for, uh, English language services for our newcomers. And then we have seven point four million dollars for private vouchers. So that comes out to be forty-seven million dollars, a little more than that from the general fund. And if I divide that by our enrollment, it's a little over three thousand dollars per student. So when we say eleven thousand dollars for student for general education, that that's really kind of fictitious. It it's really more like eight thousand, it's a little less than eight thousand, correct?
That is. That is correct, Ed. Um, and I know we've talked about last year when we were talking about the referendum and we've talked to. In talking to some of the legislators earlier this summer, we really pointed that fact out. Um, the fact that educating our special needs students, um. Costs more money. And so when we, when we lose regular ed students. Um, it gets, that gets spread out over fewer stu- so that number goes down unfortunately and. Yeah, it, but it's it's part of the formula, it's part of our operations.
And that really falls, you would know this better than I with your knowledge across the state. But that falls disproportionately onto the larger districts, correct? We simply just have more needs for special education and more needs for. Uh, newcomer programs and say the large urban districts and say the smaller suburban districts.
Very likely, um, I can't speak for every school, but, um, I would say very likely, and especially in, like you said, the EL services. Um, I would say disproportionately with larger districts.
Thank you.
Is there one last time, anything else from anyone present or? Okay.
Um, yes, sorry. Uh, so the mill rate has one, has gone down for this year. However, um, at least, you know, property values have gone up. So, so considering those two facts. And the potential for a larger tax credit. You are, uh, are, did you say, am I correct in saying that what you were saying before is that? The hope is that this will be, you know, to the taxpayer, this will be very similar to what they paid last year.
That's the hope. Now, again, we cannot guarantee because I don't know what individual assessments are on individual homes. I don't know if there was reassessments done by specific municipalities, different municipalities, even within our service area. Um, you know, maybe having different rates. This is just the overall arching. At AASD as a whole. Um, so I don't want anybody quoting me saying their taxes are going down. Our hope is that it's level or only a very slight increase.
And I'm sorry, I do have one more question. Um, this is just going back to the, there was the. Fact about the increase in private school vouchers. That seems like a pretty substantial. Increase. Um, could you talk a little bit more about that?
The, the increase is twofold. One, the the state put a significant amount more money. Into the voucher program this year. Um, and I don't have it broken down by elementary and high school, but we all. Saw the news and it was a significant amount of, um, increase for those vouchers. We also saw an increase in the number of vouchers. So more students, uh, more families taking advantage of that program. Um, the one point eight million increase that we are seeing is unprecedented.
So I just want to add, so it's a thirty-three percent increase in voucher cost to taxpayers this year. And, um, what is, what is challenging to explain is that if a a high school student is on a voucher. The state is providing them with approximately thirteen thousand dollars per student. It's coming directly from taxpayers. State does not. Uh, give any equalization aid towards that. If that same student came to the Appleton area school district. We would receive eleven thousand for that student, but the state would pay fifty-seven percent of that through equalization aid. Means the taxpayers only paying forty-three percent of the eleven thousand as opposed to a hundred percent of the thirteen thousand. For that student to go to vouchers. So that was a change this year, like Holly said, very significant, very hard to explain. Um, but I think we're going to try in our next district digest, just so that the community understands that. Vouchers come directly from local taxpayers at a rate higher than what we're given for students in public schools.
And there is also like. This increase, part of it is due to the fact that, correct me if I'm wrong, but state legislation. Sort of allows for the, uh, for more vouchers year after year, is that right?
Yes, so right now it's increasing by one percent each year, um, but that that limit is going to be removed very soon.
Any closing comments? Okay. Seeing none, then I will adjourn, uh, this budget hearing. And we will have, uh, the board, regular board meeting will start at seven o'clock. And there will be a new, um, Zoom for anyone joining us. Remotely. All right, great, thank you, thank you all for for joining us for this budget hearing.